Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. This Liberty County Commissioners' Court, regular meeting of Liberty County Commissioners' Court. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present today. And we do have business for the court. Have a rather lengthy agenda. I think there's probably a couple of executive sessions mixed in. So if it runs a little long and anybody gets in a bind and needs to make a quick stop, just let me know. I can't promise this won't be as long as a Harris County Commissioners' Court meeting, but I can't promise I can get you out by lunch, okay? So there. All right. Call us meeting to order. And Lee, if you would, please leave us in the pledges and I'll give some indication.
Okay. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If y'all would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day as we thank you for each and every day that you grant us one more chance, one more, one more chance to make a difference, one more chance to help folks, one more chance to show love, show our neighbors that we care. Lord, in the world as it is today, I do see a lot of division, but at the same token, today we have a good, a good group of folks here and they understand what the problems of the world are. And I thank you for the opportunity that you give us to have this meeting, to have this discussion where we can move forward and help one another. Lord, please be with us as we go through this meeting and grant us wisdom and courage. Lord, please watch over everyone today that have come to visit with us. Please be with them on their way home today too, Lord. Grant us that safe passions. Lord, as we move forward through this meeting, let's think about the future for our county, for our state and our nation, for our families, for our loved ones. And Lord, may we every day embrace each other as best we can and as helpful as we can. Lord, please be with men and women in uniform, our first responders. They have a tough task. But Lord, also be with all the people of the world and show them once again the love that your son came and gave and what he did for us so we may live together in peace and respect one another. I ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Well, we get down to the notices and proclamations. DeeDee, I don't have any notices or proclamations today. DeeDee left us. There she is. No notices or proclamations today, Craig. Okay. All right. Public comment portion. We have an information item from Universal Agape Love. Yes, ma'am, if y'all would please come up and visit with us. And if y'all would, please introduce yourselves so that Ms. Chambers can get your names correct, please.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Montgomery.
Yeah, write your names down before we start spelling your name right.
Sure. I'm Stephanie Montgomery with Universal Agape Love, the CEO and one of the founders. This is Ms. Wendy Soliday. She is also a founder of Universal Agape Love and the Vice President. This is Mr. Brad Payton. He's worked with Homeland Security for over 25 years. Yeah, 27 years. Oh, 27 years. And we're here to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to address the courts about the rising and pressing issues that are going on. So we wanted to give you all the opportunity to just kind of know what we're seeing. Universal Agape Love is a nonprofit organization and we help in various areas as far as counseling services, we've relocated people who are homeless. We work with domestic violence, human trafficking, just a, just a broad spectrum. And if we can't help, we have the networks to be able to send that person to somewhere that can better benefit them if we can. So basically what we do on every year, we see, we have over 3,000 sessions, counseling sessions. We work with Bridge Haven as well. We also work with CASA as well. And so we have like over 3,000 counseling sessions that we provide. And with that information, what we do is we gather what are the rising and pressing issues that are happening here in the town of Liberty, in Liberty County. What we've been seeing is number one, suicidal ideation amongst our youth, as well as a rise in traffic victims and domestic violence. So every other year, we hold a, we host a fundraising event, which is the Country Chic. At this Country Chic event, what we do is we have Homeland Security, we teamed up with them and we educate about what's going on, how human trafficking is affecting Liberty County and giving out the tools that's needed to provide so that we can all become vigilant of these vital statistics that are increasing. So right now, what we're gonna do is, well, this weekend, we actually, and the currents were one of our, because we are fighting trafficking, human trafficking, we're also targeted as well. So we had some zip ties, we put on our, our counselor cars and we called the local authorities to let them know that there were some traffickers in the area. Well, Ms. Wendy, when she called in, she had to explain what the zip ties mean. And so for us, it tells us that even though we're here, even though we're crying out loud, even though we're saying right now Liberty County is a green area, we want to turn this area into a red zone, which means the traffickers know not our town, not our city, not our kids, not our children. It's not just about, you know, our adults, it's not just about the kids, but everyone of all ages is vulnerable to human trafficking. But if we don't know this information, if we don't know the signs, if we don't know what to look for, then we're vulnerable. And so that's why we host this event, to educate the people. And we're asking that everyone be in attendance to learn this information. So I am going to turn it over to Mr. Brad Payton.
So yeah, really quick, my portion in all this is that education. We've been dealing with this. This is not a new problem. This is new legislation that is starting to catch up with the crime. If you get it, if you have given a definition, it is the force, the fraud, or the coercion that someone causes another human being to obtain a labor, a service, or a sex. One of those three things. Now, this is something that people have been doing to other human beings since just about the dawn of man. The problem is the laws are not catching up with it. Bastards and criminals can change their game. So Houston, one of the hubs for the United States, is the mecca for trafficking humans. When they're coming across the border or into one of our major airports, this gives the traffickers an opportunity to move these bodies as fast as possible. Well, they don't like to stay in Houston, they like to move out into the rural areas. We, I promise you, you have already come across somebody who is a victim in one of the rural areas, the local businesses, and it might even be in some of the jobs that you work now. So this is not a shortage of problem, this is a lack of awareness. So events like what Ms. Stephanie is putting on is the education on how we can identify. And then once we identify, what do we do? Where do we go? Who do we tell? And then the last part, which is all just as important, the victims. After this is, the prosecution is done, what do we do? How do we help the victims? Because if you have a group of victims that are in your county that have been rescued but then put back into society and they have a lack of resources, a lack of help. So it's always, and that is a strain on the budget, that's a strain on the county on how do we control this. Getting ahead of it, not giving the traffickers the access, not giving the traffickers the ability to move into our area helps overall broadly. So that's real quick. This normal course is about eight hours condensed down into about two or three minutes. That's the definition and the issue that we're facing.
And it's important to know that the funds, where do these funds go, right? We're raising these funds. The funds are actually there for you to access. It is not for Universal Agape Love to access. 100% of these funds go back into the community. So let's say we come across a case of human trafficking, we need to place these people. Number one, you cannot have your car, if you have a car, or domestic violence, hump them together. But you cannot have your car, you cannot have your phone because of the perpetrator may be looking for you and can tag you, right? So we need to get them into another state, another town, somewhere else that we can provide a safe haven. Those funds, if you were to call Universal Agape Love, hey, we don't have this in the budget. Do we have any funds for this? Yes, we do. How much do you need? And it's all for the county. So it's not for us, but it is for the benefit. We just want to let the people know that's out there. We have had many of clients come in that were trafficked. We have had traffickers come in for counseling because they are trying to get out of their time to serve. And so basically, we're here to provide that services for you. So it's not going in our bank account so we can feel lavish, it's going in the account to put back into the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. The event is this Saturday, it is this Saturday at the Dayton Community Center, September 27th. Now, it is a cost to come in, we will feed you and everything, really, really great food. But if the event is there, it is $100 per person. The funds are going to the traffic victims, that's what I'm speaking to.
Do you have a phone, contact phone number?
We do. The phone number is 936-262-7800. And we're located in Dayton.
What time does it start?
It starts at 5:30 on Saturday, 5:30 on Saturday. Yes. Barbecue dinner, small barbecue dinner, auctions, live auctions, we have solid auctions as well because we're trying to raise money. But we also have alcohol and we'll have, and the alcohol is free, it's all you can drink, that's for pleasure. Mechanical bull rise. So it's fun, but we're learning. We're, we're learning as we enjoy ourselves.
So drink all the alcohol and then get on the mechanical bull. And you shake, you shake, empty the pockets.
That's the point. That's the point. Empty the pockets. Thank you.
No, you're not. No way.
Okay. Next item on information only is update on BioBell development. Logan Marchman. Logan, if you would, please come up.
I handled that. I dropped the issue last week. Good morning, I'm Logan Marchman. I have a community called BioBell, which is 850 acres over on Hatcherville, so on the east side of Liberty. And I'm just giving a quick update, was up for the court in February, March of this year for the preliminary work and things have come along pretty well since. So I will be extremely brief because I know you guys have a very long day. So visuals come out. Visuals come out and plan. All right, so.
What's that?
Only got a couple.
It's a highway, man. No, it's in Bruce's.
But anyway, BioBell is just a little bit off. You guys have a location and it's a community that has a community. Right now, we are ready to plat the first phase, which is not going to require various agreements, it's just going to be 23 quarter acre lots. The total community is going to be about 2,500 homes all built out. But yeah, probably won't come on the ground until 28, but it's a lot easier to start with a big acre shift first, which is a big war. So really, in the next couple of weeks, going, we need to drainage plan, or it's done from the engineers, so meeting with the drainage district is going to be the next step, again, with final plan, getting that resolved. Going to start talking with the county itself about development agreement for the actual density of the community going forward. Now we have the details to work with, going to continue getting the builders on the contract. So we had the first couple and now we're working forward. But unfortunately, I can't show everyone the plan, what's going on, so it's a little hard to form the map. But basically, core BioBell is every home in this community is touching some form of a freeway, some form of forest, some form of a walkway, be it 30 foot or 100 foot. But the idea is that no matter where you are, it still feels like you're out in the center. So that's pretty much it, guys. Just wanted to give everyone a quick update. It's been a while since I've been here.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. And DeeDee, we didn't have anybody sign up for public comment this morning? Yeah. All right, we'll move on to item number six, declare conflicts of interest. Is there anybody on the court that has a reason to declare any conflicts? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. And when I believe we had two or three items, is that correct?
Budget amendment to increase budget of revenue. I think I heard it said, I don't know, about just increase other income by $2,325. Increase the cost expenditure by $1,163. Increase the bridge haven expenditure by $1,162. I got another budget amendment. This is state mandated for the county court at law judges' salaries, which all the judges' salaries changed this year. Basically, for one month, we're going to increase county court at law salary by $3,675 and the related FICA of 281 and retirement expense of 643. And for county court at law number two, increases salary for one month, $3,500. FICA is going up 268 and retirement's going up $613 and reducing the contingency budget $8980.
All right. Kim, you have one?
I do. And we have a payoff for Ms. Kim Lawton from the 70 bit and it's for comp time, 255 hours. The goal is $8,976.
All right.
Along with the additions, I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to the regular agenda. Item number eight, one for me is, it's just information item only, report from the county sheriff on the repairs to the Liberty County jail. And Warden, I guess you're here today to, okay, if you would, please ease on up and...
So, Sadapik has come in to do all of the hinges and intercoms. They finished all of JKL and MPQ, which is two of our hallways. One of the dorms is operational as far as the locks and the intercoms being completely put in. We're going to look at moving some mags around to continue that progress. The maintenance crew is back on seven days a week to be able to escort these contractors around because we do have two different contractors working on West Hall and Sadapik working on the hinges and locks. The fire restoration and expanded metal started on the 22nd of September. They've gotten roughly 75% of the demolition completed on West Hall. The HBAC system down on that hallway is a lot more damaged than what they originally thought, so that's going to be a little bit more of a challenge that they're facing. However, they have started working on it. And we're still looking for an HBAC company to be able to go through the rest of the building and try and fix that system as soon as possible because it does need complete renovation, unfortunately. The rest of the projects are scheduled to begin after the 1st of October so that we can go ahead and get them paid and everything with the new budget that comes out. Any questions?
Andy, y'all are keeping up with the firearm system there, is that correct?
I have not been asked to go in there that's in the city. I don't have authority over that.
I realize that, I just thought maybe you could...
I can go in there and take another look at it.
Yeah, okay. You understand?
They have the trouble until they finish the repairs on the fireside. That's where all the trouble is coming from.
Yeah, I know the city has the authority, but if you can just kind of keep the hot shot going, okay.
So how close are we to being complete, though, besides the HVAC? I mean, do we have a timeline?
Unfortunately, no. We're looking to hopefully have a good majority of it completed by the end of the year this year. I think the locks and the West Hall restoration is going to take the most amount of time because of the damage that was done. But we're looking hopefully by the end of the year to have a good chunk of it completed.
Okay. Warden, one question. Y'all had about 34 people that were perfectly ready to go to their new home with the state of Texas. Did y'all get anything taken care of on that?
I sent them yesterday. We have some that we sent to other counties. We have about 15 in county now and 15 out of county.
Okay. If you would, just keep me updated on that so I can make a call again.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But TDC is, they're going to work with us, but the other side of this, we're not the only county in the same shape. Okay, yeah, okay. All right, this is that information item, but I would request that, have a motion and a second and a vote to accept.
Who accepts?
Yeah, a motion from Greg to accept.
Second.
Yeah. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Got a motion and a second to accept any further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight, two for me is consider and approve adopting the salaries of the elected officials for fiscal year 2026. And that has been submitted prior for your consideration. It's also been posted, notification by publication in the vindicator. I know for a couple of times now, it, so it's according to what's required by law, we kept up our side of it. So it is now the, well, the consideration of the commissioners to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. To approve any further discussion.
I just have a comment. I know I voted for this salary increase way back when, before I got to see the budget, but now I can't, can't support that again. But I just wanted to make it clear, I did vote for it when it was to be presented to the public and when we have our vote, I'm not going to be able to support it.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Yeah, got, got three ayes, one nay. Item number eight, three for me is consider and approve the adoption of the Liberty County budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. We've all had the opportunity to discuss this and review this for quite some time now. And we know what the writing on the wall is in this regard.
We're approved.
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Okay.
When, when you get to page 57, up until that point, the preceding year is listed as 25. When you get to page 57 and beyond, it says, it's the fiscal year 24.
This is required that we show the actual budget comparison for the most completed prior year.
No, I understand. Up until that, to that page, let's see. I thought it was comparing to the 25 budget, not the 24 budget.
Now, this is, this is not a comparison. Page 57 is just our last completed fiscal year. It shows budget to actual comparison.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Vote for. So we have four ayes.
That messed me up a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Just when I reset it, it knocks everything out. Who made the motion?
Greg.
Uh, Greg did.
Greg did.
Bruce made the second.
Bruce seconded. Okay, I apologize for that.
That's okay. So we got four ayes and one nay.
Sorry about that.
And that motion does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, four for me, consider and approve adopting the 2025 tax rate of 48 cents as we discussed previously. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Fair.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Yeah, four ayes, one nay.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And for payroll purposes, the position budget and the employee salaries will be filed within a county clerk's office after the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number eight, six, well, from me and Evan Robinson. Evan, if you would, come on up. Evan's with Tri-County Services. Consider and approve public service agreement between Liberty County and Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare for the purpose of providing mental health services to the citizens of Liberty County, Texas.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good to see you. It's been so thank you for having me. Always a privilege to be one of the director here. I've got a couple more. I'm going to keep wanting to talk to Evan because I'm used to talking to a PowerPoint presentation, so I can do that best. My name is Evan Robinson and I am the, served currently as the executive director for Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare. We serve the three counties, Montgomery, Liberty, and Walker. You guys, you know, you're in the hot zone, right? I mean, everybody knows this. I mentioned I was listening to you talk earlier. How many of those calls were about mental health?
None.
None, right? And this is the truth of our world, except for when, when somebody is really in need and they expect there to be a safety head resource there to catch that need. And you don't get a lot of calls on it. I do, though. My calls usually come from senators and representatives who are like, I've got this person, they're in my lobby, come get him, maybe, something like that. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm going to go through these very quickly. I know it's kind of thick and heavy, but it won't be long. So I just, just a reminder that we are a unit of local government, a state...
Likewise, nays.
Nay.
Aye. Yeah, four ayes. One nay.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And for payroll purposes, the position budget and the employee salaries will be filed within a county's office.
Yes, ma'am.
After the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number eight, six, well, from me and Evan Robinson. Evan, if you would come on up. Evan's with Tri-County Services. Consider and approve public service agreement between Liberty County and Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare for the purpose of providing mental health services to the citizens of Liberty County, Texas.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you. It's been so thank you for having me. Always a privilege to be one of the director here. I've got a couple more. I'm going to keep wanting to talk to Evan because I'm used to talking to a PowerPoint presentation, so I can do that best. My name is Evan Robinson, and I am the, served currently as the executive director for Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare. We serve the three counties, Montgomery, Liberty, and Walker. You guys, you know, you're in the hot zone, right? I mean, everybody knows this. I mentioned I was listening to you talk earlier. How many of those calls were about mental health?
None.
None, right? And this is the truth of our world, except for when, when somebody is really in need, and then they expect there to be a safety head resource there to catch that need. And you don't get a lot of calls on it. I do, though. My calls usually come from senators and representatives who are like, I've got this person. They're in my lobby. Come get him, maybe, something like that. Anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I'm going to go through these very quickly. I know it's kind of thick and heavy, but it won't be long. So I just, just a reminder that we are a unit of local government established by chapter 534 of the Health and Safety Code. We are a part of county government. Liberty, Walker, and Montgomery County did a local agreement in nineteen eighty-three to form our organization, and the organizations that became UMA and the Jamar Centers of that day, or now called community centers today, are all over two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas, and they, they're all kinds of different sizes. We are a large, medium-sized center in the state of Texas, and we're starting about, there's about a million lives in three counties these days, so it's a large service area. The reason we were formed is to divert folks from states to communities, which are much more expensive. One person, Russ State Hospital, year-round, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Okay? So, community is the cheaper way to do this. It's also much more gentle and effective in most cases. Our funding, you'll hear a lot about mental health and intellectual disability funding. I took a couple slides in there. Here's the, here's the bottom line on that. Not good in Texas. And you may be asking yourself, I'm on this slide with the bar graph. Well, I hear a lot about all the funding that's being invested in the legislature, and it's true. Legislature has made record levels of investment in mental health, but most of that has been in this top set of bars, which is the state hospital system. So you may be aware, may not be aware, but they're building new buildings all around the state, and they needed to do that. Some of those places were. I mean, the Russ, the main Russ Hospital was built in early nineteen hundreds. It was awful, so needed to be done. But the funding that the legislature has been investing has been in hospitalization. When you look at the bottom two graph, bar graphs on there, that's where the community stuff lives, and most of that investment has either been in targeted grants, with, most of the time with a bunch of match, or it's been federal ARPA funds that were passed through the Plinko Board, is what I call it, down to community centers. Most of that's been pulled back from us. Our budget has shrunk over twenty percent in the last two years as these funds start drying out. So you can see from the slide with the pie graphs there that, you know, what community mental health is, what we do is actually a smaller part of what the state budget is. And we're not keeping up with population in Texas. Surprise. And, you know, let's just talk about where we're at, right? Liberty County, we're super fast-growing county. Montgomery County, super fast-growing county, and I happen to be a Walker County resident, and that's a super fast-growing county. All of a sudden, too, it jumped a step for us, and now Walker County is growing real fast. So we're in a high-growth area, and what we know from a prevalent standpoint is about eight percent of people in your community are going to need the kind of services that we provide. Serious mental illness, serious emotional disturbance for kids, intellectual disability services, eight percent. So you can pretty much take the population of Liberty County, multiply it by eight percent, and you get an idea of the number of people that might need the services that we provide on a daily basis. So we're just not keeping up with funding from the state perspective and the community mental health system. I know that that's the challenge, right? I listened to you, and I was empathizing in the back, right? We are, we're showing since 2019, a twenty-eight percent inflation, you know, super price index, right, increase. I mean, there's no funding sources kept up with that, and everything costs more. Every time, I got somebody up on my roof at the big building. I'm here today because I don't have air conditioning in my office, but I guarantee you that bill will be four times what it was six or seven years ago, just the way it is today. So we've been specifically impacted in the state by loss of Medicaid. So this graph, it's a line graph here. The green bar is us, Tri-County, and a lot of lives are no longer covered by Medicaid. So we're Medicaid, low income, uninsured. That's our, that's our kind of wheelhouse, right? We're not here to provide, you know, the custom ranch that you go to to have substance use disorders worked through. We're here to do the kind of meat and potato stuff. And most of that has been funded by Medicaid with general revenue or state funding supplement, but that kind of switches. We're getting more and more generative funded because the Medicaid dollars are dropping away. And there's a lot of cuts potentially coming to the work we do. I put a couple pictures in here. You kind of judgmented a couple of them. So the groundbreaking for our new Cleveland facility and then the, then the actual building, our picture of our new Cleveland facility. This is thirty-six thousand square foot facility that we opened on September fifteenth. So the idea is there. Cleveland is growing quickly, and the Truman facility, the little facility I had, was about eight thousand square feet and literally didn't have enough people to, room for people to have a seat in the lobby. So we've, we've, the board has chosen to grow our physical footprint so that we can meet more needs in the community. When we finished all the permitting process, we're going to have a big sign on the side of that building, so you'll be able to find it. We're not trying to hide where we are and what we do. If you have those needs, we want to, we want to be there for you. You can see in our data here, this is the column graph, I guess, that we kind of hit a peak in FY22, so people certainly seek our services. But I would say to you that we're still well above where we were in FY20, and a number of people who are seeking our care. And I don't know if you guys see it, but as a mental health professional, I see it, but folks in the grocery store line are not okay. I mean, you see our kids, our schools tell you that kids are not okay. In fact, they tell us the kids are not okay. So, you know, we know that folks are not functioning super well. The pandemic did not do us any favors in that regard. So let me get to the meat and potatoes part of this. So I'll pay, oh, I should have numbered the pages. Where's that center budget and match? Just want to give you an idea. Our current budget this year is thirty-nine million and some change, almost forty million dollars. By the way, we're almost fifty-one man at one point. The required match for just our two main performance contracts is a million nine. That's supposed to be local match, right? So for decades, we've been managing that without much county support, frankly, but about twelve to fifteen percent of our services are in this county. Depends on which, how you count services, what time of year it is, those kind of things. So just to give you an idea, I'm not here asking for that match. Just want you to know. One point nine, if you write me that check, though, I will run out of here and cash it, okay? So I'll take Venmo, whatever you got. You just let me know. And so you know, I mean, eighty percent of what we do is hire people. So, I mean, it's not, we are building a building now and then. Actually, that's the second building we've built, not very often, but most of what we do is hire staff that are working with these folks who have these, these things. So you guys have been funding us a hundred thousand dollars a year since FY22. Thank you for that. We appreciate that very much. That's a, I know it's a big number for you guys. I've sat in this courtroom and listened to you, proven, you know, the first of an I've had. You know, I, I know that money matters, and we appreciate that support. I will tell you that the population is under a lot more pressure on the services we provide, and we're not getting much help from above right now. And so, you know, just know that we're trying to do everything we can with the resources we have, but the need is going to outpace. We, we got, we got mental health potholes that aren't going to get filled. Road's not going to get fixed, potentially, if funding's up there. So the other thing I would just put in your, bug in your ear, is that we get a lot of opportunity for grants that require a local match, so I can leverage your money against other folks' money. I've already leveraged it near a hundred thousand dollars. Thank you, brother, for doing that. But if, if those opportunities pop up, we want to have the opportunity to, to do that. So we are on the sunset horizon, so who knows what the state will do to us in the next couple of years. Anyway, with that, I will shut up, take any questions you might add.
You have a location here in Liberty as well?
We do. Pantherland, right across from High School. In fact, every time there's a, with van going in the parking lot, it's filled.
Yeah.
With all the cars.
Right there behind Brooks Brothers, y'all, just in case, yeah.
We had two locations, and we bought the old bowling alley and remodeled it. It's actually very nice.
It is. Yeah. And your new facility in Cleveland is really, really nice.
Yeah.
We, we're proud to have that facility. You know, when we built the new facility in Conner, this is now almost ten years ago, we had clients that would come in and say, you know, your old buildings used to make me depressed. You know, I can walk into your building, I walk in this little dank office, and there's like stuff growing on the ceiling, and I didn't feel any better. You know, so facilities matter. It's not what we're here to do. It's not why we exist, the little buildings, but it does matter to have the right.
It is. Yeah. I know we, we did toss in about six hundred thousand one, one time.
Yes, yes.
From an ARPA.
Through ARPA, well, ARPA or something.
It was ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, we used that on school-based mental health clinics and some other things in Cleveland ISD. We're in Pine Brewer and Cottonwood Schools there, the school mental health clinic, and some other things. Very appreciated. If you have ideas about how to get money, you know, if, you know, whatever, I'm calm. I'm more than interested in talking.
Well, there used to be a tree right out the window here. That was our money tree, but Hurricane got it. So.
I don't remember that tree. I shake all the trees around this building. I don't remember shaking that one.
We're, we're going to get, we're going to plant another one.
That must have been a.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
We should do. Very much.
If I can support you in any way, this is what we're here. I'm a public servant. That's why we exist. So if you're going to have those calls, someday you're going to get that call. That's what we're here to do. So.
We appreciate everything y'all do because it, I know when I first got here in 2015, we might get three mental health calls a week, maybe. No, actually, it may be three a month. Yeah. And just watch the steadily rise up. And so now it's sometimes three a week, but we have, you know, through the Sheriff's Department, you know, personnel that are assigned to helping mental crisis intervention, so to speak. And we still get some mental warrants that are carried through our office, but we try to intervene first and get the welfare check taken care of, and then an assessment in the field. So we've, we changed a little bit to help out, but it's just part of the growing pains that we have to live through.
And we don't serve them.
Yeah.
Before the crisis, where it gets going, we end up serving them in emergency rooms, serving them in jails, or serving them somewhere else. They don't disappear. They just get more and more.
Right.
You know, acute, and we end up with a bigger thing to fix. It's so much cheaper. Part of the whole community system process is that it's much cheaper to get these things at the beginning and early and address some of these issues before they become the big thing that needs to be institutionalized. So.
Yeah. Well, you tune into the news in the morning and the evening. It's, that is reason enough to make you want to go visit y'all at Tri-County. But we do appreciate everything you do for us, Evan. It, it, one thing about it, Evan's always there. And if you have a question, please call him, and he will answer you. I mean, darn near immediately. So it, you're very much appreciated. We're going to keep doing all we can to help. It's, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So this is for the approval of the service agreement between Liberty County and Tri-County Behavioral Healthcare.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Kind of motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you so much, gentlemen. And thank you, Evan. Thank you. Item number eight, sevens, from Ms. Harris, over in the county treasurer's office. Consider and approve the Tax Association of Counties 2026 renewal notice and benefit confirmation and all related documents in the renewal packet. So Ms. Harris, if you would.
Okay, so TAC is, as you all know, our health insurance provider.
Kim, I'm going to stop you because I promised you on that recording that you care where you're saying. Please stop.
And TAC is our health insurance provider that the court has selected a few years ago. And for the 2026 calendar year, the medical rate proposed by TAC will be an increase of four point nine percent. The dental will be a four point four percent increase. There will be no change on the vision and no change on the employer-provided life insurance or the employee paid for life insurance. We currently have medical plan thirteen hundred dash NGS that has a thirty-dollar copay, a fifteen hundred dollar deductible. It pays at eighty percent. There's a thirty-five hundred dollar out-of-pocket maximum, a forty-dollar specialty copay. So that is the current plan that, and the renewal increases that TAC has proposed for us. Now, in the packet, there are a few items that I want to point out that we need to select if the court so chooses. Under the retiree information, these pages are not numbered, but under basic retiree life, we do provide post-sixty-five retiree life insurance currently. That box is just not checked, inadvertently not checked. Under attachment A, page seven, the box that would be checked there is A for the pooled coverage. Box E would be checked for the ACA reporting and tracking service. And this is where TAC provides everyone with the ten ninety-fives under the. F would be checked. It's the Cobra Administrative Services that, that TAC currently provides for us. And then on the Healthy County County-Specific incentive program, we do not currently have one of those. I would recommend that we check that. We are interested in learning more about that box. So that's what we have from TAC for our renewal for the 2026 calendar year.
So with, with this budget that was just passed today, do the employees' out-of-pocket change in this, with this new plan?
It, it would be a decision of the court to make any changes to the plan design. The rates that I've just quoted to you all from TAC include the same plan with the same copays and the same out-of-pocket maximums that we have for 2025.
But I guess you're talking more about the monthly premium specifically.
That's the next agenda item.
Oh, sorry.
We got to, got to pass, agree to the renewal, and then we'll talk about.
Okay, because I had one more question on, on coverage. Was there any reduction in coverage? But I'll, I'll wait on that.
Right. So the, the plan that we currently have, the thirteen hundred NGS, is what we currently have. But the court could decide to go with a, a different plan with different types of coverage, different copays, different out-of-pockets. But what TAC has on this renewal notice currently is the, the new rates that would be in effect for the plan that we currently have selected.
Yeah, essentially, it would be the same coverage, though.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have the insurance, so I don't, I don't even know what, what any of this is.
One caveat to the coverage, and that is that TAC provided this plan year 2026 benefit updates, and they have a paragraph there about the pharmacy network optimization, if you all saw that. But just to read this real quickly, to help manage rising pharmacy costs and enhance overall prescription drug savings for the pool, TAC will transition to a more focused pharmacy network. As part of this change, CVS, Kroger, United Pharmacy, and Albertson's pharmacies will no longer be included in the network effective on your group's anniversary day. So those pharmacies will be out of the network under the religious.
They're dropping CVS?
They are.
The main one in Liberty?
They are.
Lovely.
Well, you can come see us in Dayton.
I guess I'm going to be.
Walgreens, yeah. Okay.
So included in the motion, we have the retiree information that needs to be checked, the post.
So the retiring information, we do provide the basic retiree life. The box that's checked is the pre-sixty-five, but just inadvertently, the post-sixty-five box is not checked. So we would need to check that box because we have been providing that coverage. It's a, it's an age-based reduction on the amount that's covered, but yes, we have that coverage from post-sixty-five retirees as well as pre-sixty-five.
And I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from Greg, to approve. Any further discussion?
I think there was, she had like three or four things that she said that needed to be initial, right? It was more than that, that life insurance and the retirees.
There are quite a few places that Jay will need to initial on this. I can go through those if you would like for me to.
No, you, you, you've mentioned it when you were giving your overview, but I know Bruce specifically asked about the life insurance part, but I thought there were some other additions to that.
And under the attachment, it would be A, E, and F that would need to be checked. And that's the pooled coverage, the ACA reporting, the Cobra Administration. That's it. Oh, oh, and the CSI that we're interested in.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eight, from Ms. Harris, consider and approve the 2026 health insurance premium rates for employees and employer as required by the TAC renewal notice, if the court has elected to renew with TAC, which we did.
You just did. So that box is checked. And what I need to know so that I can, can fill out the renewal is how the court would like to split the increase between the employees and the employer. Last year, when the court. Last year, when the court renewed with TAC, the court did elect for the county to pay 100% of the increase. The employees did not take on any of that increase, so it's strictly a decision of the court.
I feel like I ought to go 50/50.
What's accounted for in the budget? Anything?
Oh, we have a little cushion. We budget a little bit cushioned. You can have somebody that, just a single employee with the department, and they leave, and then somebody else comes in and they have spouse.
I got you. So, you budget for the higher rate?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
I know the way through the county paying the increase.
Second.
So, you're saying Liberty County will pay the full increase?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg, a second from David, to accept with the county paying the increase. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to give you a first chance, Gerald.
No, you know, one of the things that I've heard around the barn is that, you know, the county will give a pay increase, but then our premiums go up, and so it's negated by that. So, I hear Bruce, and I'm with him that, you know, we need to be really good stewards of the dollars, but I've been listening to the cries of the people. And so, yeah, I'm going to support this for sure.
All right. Any further discussion?
For confirmation, that would be on the medical, dental, and vision portions of the insurance.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Ms. Harris. Appreciate the help this morning.
Thank you.
All right. Number eight nine for me is consider and approve a capital credits payment of $2,324.71 from the Texas Comptroller Office. This amount will be divided equally between CASA and Bridgehaven Children's Advocacy. It's a pretty easy one to understand.
Take a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight ten for me is consider and approve Mark Sholander and Jimmy Rollins as candidates for the Liberty County Appraisal District. As y'all know, we received our notification from the appraisal district on the members of the board that, there were two that we're going to roll off, but they're still eligible for one more term. I did talk to those two gentlemen and ask if they would still be willing to serve, and they both agreed that they would. So, this goes into a resolution that is sent to the CAD for when we do approve the board later on.
So, there'll be new members, Mark and-
No, they're existing members now.
They're staying on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion from David. Second from Bruce, Greg, excuse me, Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Item number eight eleven for me is consider and approve the effective date of October 1st, 2025, is the termination of the COVID pay policy previously approved by the Commissioners' Court on August 26th, 2025. And we did approve to stop this, we just didn't put a date with it. Okay? So, we're going to put a date with it now.
I'll second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight twelve from Mr. Brown over the Tax Collector's Office. Consider and approve the hours and costs associated with the voter registrar's department that exceeds their normal salaries during the hours the polls are required to be open per Election Code 12.004. The maximum amount is $3,076.76. It's based on the proposed 5% raise. The 5% raise did pass. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here with us.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Anything you want to add to it?
Nope. I have one more item after that.
Okay. Let's say the court.
I'll second.
Motion from Greg. Gerald was in a stick of it.
Yeah.
Boy. It's the big-
You've got a guy above name.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Item number eight thirteen from Mr. Brown over the Tax Collector's Office. Consider and approve security contract with Gray Star Protection effective 10/1/25. Okay? As y'all know, he does have one person that stays out there, and he's quite dependable. He's there every day.
Yeah.
Yes. Let's ring a note on the motion that it is for the Texas Assessor's Office only, because it sounds like we're hiring them.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the-
Have y'all reviewed the contract, everything?
Yeah, it looks just fine.
The security contract with, for the Texas Assessor Collector Office, for a contract security agent.
Is Mr. Brown satisfied with our services?
Yes, we all are. Very good.
Okay. Got a motion, Gerald, second from Greg, to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Consider and approve public notice for optional healthcare services and my signature. Ms. McMillan is with us, her dad's service was yesterday, so she's still out. As y'all know, she recently lost her father.
This is just for notice, right?
Right. It's just for notice of optional.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise nay. Thank you, gentlemen. It does pass. Eight fifteen from Mr. Gott. Consider and take action on increasing the emergency budget amendment to $2 million to cover additional costs to housing inmates out of county. That's a lot out of number 010-56500-4000. And it's with, y'all know what we're up against, okay? We're shipping more people out than we're keeping. That's why the action is necessary to get this jail put back together quickly.
So, these are just the 2025 cost?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Gerald, second. That was Bruce, wasn't it?
No, Greg.
That's Greg.
He's been quite vocal today.
Yeah, I know. I've got this here turned on pretty good. I mean, just checking, yeah. Motion Gerald, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight sixteen from Constable Hartness up in Precinct Six. Discuss, take action to approve Liberty County Precinct Six Constable's office to apply for Texas House Bill 4264 grant for full-time employees with a master proficiency certificate on or after September 1st, 2025. And that is, that grant is allowed by the legislature.
The state passed legislation where every law enforcement officer's got a master. The state passed legislation where they're going to offer a grant to every law enforcement officer that's got a master's piece off certificate. The state's going to give them one time, one time, as far as we know, a $6,500 grant.
Right.
And of course, the county's got to pick up the-
The benefit side, yeah.
Retirement. The way we're going to do this is all these different agencies, when they, I think we talked to Kim's office, they're going to apply for these grants, and when they get the money, the $6,500, we're going to pay them in a one-time slump sum after we get the money.
Sure we will. Okay.
So, it's, I notice it's not all of the Constable's office, you know, I know we did it for the sheriffs, and there were a couple, I think, there were a couple other people in there. So, are they coming, or they just haven't?
They don't all have masters.
Oh.
Well, they don't all have their agenda, have it on this agenda. It's if they're not all on this agenda.
Okay.
They may be on the next one.
That's why we're paying them after we get the money.
We're going to wait until everyone has filed, and then we pay.
Okay.
So, if you know a constable that didn't file, and they have master's piece certificate, and you want your pay, call them and make sure they get them on our agenda.
Right. Okay. All right, let's say the court. Motion from Greg.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight seventeen from Constable Hunter up in Precinct Five, this for the same reason, and it's just that he has to apply for his own department.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. Motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight eighteen from Constable, Precinct Three, Mark Mad Dog Davidson. Mark, there you are today. Thank you for coming. Appreciate you being here. It's for the same reason.
I think I'm both. I think.
Bruce, David.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Also, item number eight nineteen from Ms. Bergman down the District Attorney's Office, also seeking the House Bill 4264 grant for all of her full-time employees' master proficiency certificate.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty from Mr. Dennis over the IT Department, considering and approve adding a copier to the county's master contract for the District Clerk's office at a cost of $83.39 a month. Nick?
Yes, sir. Just add a new copier for the District Clerk's office on the third floor.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion from David, second from Gerald. He barely beat you, just real quick.
It's the wire finisher guy.
Yeah. By nose, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. From Mr. Dennis, also, eight twenty-one. Consider and approve the quote from A1 Telecom for the District Attorney's Office Network Project at 1801 Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas. Projected total is going to be $13,622.65. We have to pay 60% to start, which is $8,173.59, and a 40% completion number at $5,449.06. So, they're requesting the down payment to begin work on the building.
Yes, sir. That's basically, it's to get the DA's office movement to the-
Yes, sir.
And this will be coming out of the new budget.
Yes, that's why we're, yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Bruce, a second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. And that motion does carry. Number eight twenty-two for me is consider and approve statewide automated victim notification service, which is Savin's Grant. This is an annual renewal through the Office of the Attorney General. And so, I'm just asking that we renew this grant. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David.
I'll second.
Second, that was from Gerald. He barely beat you, Greg. Okay.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. Motion carries. Item number eight twenty-three from Judge Fuller up in Precinct Six.
Didn't we just?
We just did this one.
I want to make sure he has plenty of envelopes. Consider and approve the purchase of 11 boxes of envelopes for Judge Fuller's office for a total cost of $2,591.34 to be paid from the Justice Support Court Fund. That's what we need to get clarified. Justice Court Support Fund. From the Justice Court Support Fund.
Is that the difference from last time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Because the 11 boxes is just too ironic.
Got a motion from David, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number item eight twenty-four from the 75th District Court. Consider and approve the renewal of West Proflex for the 75th District Court for $1,674.37 a month. And-
Should be West Law.
Yeah, it's just West Law.
West Law, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-five for Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve the extension request for Liberty County Buyout Contract Number 20-066-013-C095 with the GLO. This is a request for an extension of time to file remaining paperwork to bring this grant to a close. There will be no de-obligation of any funds. Pretty self-explanatory, but Melinda, you want to?
No, that's pretty much, I got together with Auditor's Office, Natalie, and I went through all the paperwork. We just want this time to make sure everything gets turned in on time for this grant, because it was a large grant.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-six for Ms. Soliday is consider and approve a draw request, number seven, in the amount of $362,951.70 for the General Land Office Community Development and Revitalization Grant, number 20-066-013-C095. That's the housing buyout. This is just the second part of that previous.
And this hopefully will tie up all those ends and include the four remaining houses that were just finished.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-seven for Ms. Soliday, consider and approve payment request to James W. Turner Construction Limited for the file of four homes and the housing buyout property demolitions in the amount of $106,674 using GLO grant funds. I'll say that again, using GLO grant funds. The contracts were approved during the April 22nd, 2025 Commissioners' Court meeting. And that item one was $46,520. Item two was $17,400. Item three was $29,204. And item four was $13,550. That total does come up to $106,674.
I get a question about this. So, they demo the houses, and then who owns the property?
The county.
The county does.
It becomes green space.
Okay.
No longer to be sold, it stays in green space. That's part of the grant agreement, is that it remains green space.
Okay. So, then we got, do we maintain it then? Do you have to mow it?
Most of my FEMA property I have to mow throughout the county, even in the city limits here. We have FEMA old projects that we've bought and we still have to maintain.
Okay.
What I try to do is lease them or rent them to neighboring houses and stuff so they can use it as a yard and, but they can't build on it.
The majority of these are very small lots.
They are.
They're, they're not even like point two.
Okay. I, I'm just wondering what exactly happened with the property.
Yeah.
You pay them for the, the house.
Tear it down.
It has to be.
The grant pays for tearing it down as well. Okay.
Motion from David. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Let's take a short recess, please. Uh, it's raining.
It's raining.
It's raining. Okay, we're gonna take about a ten-minute break. We're back in regular session. We are now on item eight, number twenty-eight, uh, permits inspection to Ms. Soliday. Consider approve a payment to Shawn Bergen Pope, uh, change for invoice, uh, number one two nine oh one, zero zero dash two three for twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars, number one two nine oh one, point zero zero dash two four for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, and number one two nine zero one, zero zero two five for nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for the Ames Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project using ARPA funds in the total amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The invoices are attached with the Meridomane Signature of Approval. That's pretty well all self-explanatory, especially where the funds are coming from. Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-nine from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve Liberty County MUD number eighteen request for the use of a holding tank for their temporary building. Location will be at four one three two County Road six oh two. Property belongs to Dayton Land Investment LLC. Attached in the packet for your review is a copy of their contract with Gainesboro Waste for a clean-out of the holding tanks three times a week. Uh, we do allow this in cases like this. Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, do we require a permit for this?
Yes.
And they've secured the permit?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, I don't believe that these folks have come before us with, in any manner to tell us what, uh, they're about to do.
No.
And, and so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. This has been going on. There've been lots of surveying. They set the trailer. I mean, we told your folks, we told you and your folks that that trailer was sitting there with a holding tank. And so I, I mean, this, this one doesn't.
We were unaware that this was required.
Looks like they would do their homework to what county development guidelines would be. And so, I mean, I've heard the judge here tell them, have you, you know, talk to the schools? Have you talked to the, the fire marshal and the emergency management coordinator? All the folks that are, are kind of stakeholders. You would think someone in the precinct, I mean, the, the, the other folks, they, they, they seek you out. I don't, I don't go, I don't go find them. They find me. And, you know, with the Calera group and then the, uh, the Smezny Tract folks, you know, they, they all, they somehow find you and, uh, and, and kind of target you to, uh, to run, kind of run interference for them, so to speak. But this group, I don't know who they are.
Yeah.
The MUDs are unusual. I think this, I think this MUD has already got their election or it's up for this time.
It's up for this time. How long do they have to have that residence established before they can vote?
Six months.
Well, it hadn't been there six months.
I, I don't think it's six months. I think they've had the voter place for like sixty days.
Sixty days for the vote, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, it's, might have been there sixty days, but how long's it been permitted?
I just, I, I can't say the exact date it was permitted, but I did contact.
They might make it on this election if we approve this. I mean, I guess we should, but.
Well, otherwise they'll be living there without.
Well, if somebody's truly living there.
Well, they do have technically, they do have to.
Just saying.
Yeah.
It's sitting there, yeah.
You know, in, in this particular election coming up, we've got, I think, four, you know, of these type entities that have to establish a voter and a field somewhere. So, yeah, it's not unusual.
All right, I mean.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries. Keep an eye on them there if you would, Melinda.
Yeah, all of them.
Yeah.
If that one brother issued a temporary for a holding tank, then they'll just pump them ditch.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
At least we kind of know.
Fortunately, I have more inspectors now. And my two floodplain inspectors go around and look also, um, on a daily. So I do have six eyes in the field, six sets of eyes in the field, two helps with this. So I am catching more items than we did.
Plus all of Precinct four. Everybody's out there.
All right, I know.
All righty. I will seek him. We have an hallelujah for the rain. I mean, it was starting to get a little bit dry around here. I was worried about Andy having to call up for a burn ban on us and it, uh, maybe the good Lord, he, he took care of us today. Thank you, Lord. Yes, okay. All right, item number eight thirty from Ms. Soliday is consider and approve Liberty County MUD number eight request for the use of a holding tank for their temporary building. Location will be at five ninety-five County Road six twelve. The property belongs to Freedom Trail and Mark Stosser attached. In the packet for your review is a copy of their contract with Gainesboro Waste for clean-out of the holding tanks three times a week. Gerald, that's on that stretch in between Grand Parkway.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and U P Track.
Again, this is one that the precinct folks saw and, and we started questioning and it took us a while.
To find.
Mm-hmm. Sneaky.
This one is also on the ballot.
Now, this one's been there a while. That's, 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 uh, that's.
It wasn't a surprise, yeah.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
It's, it's about a holding tank. And it's gonna be cleaned out regularly, three times a week. What's in a holding tank?
Gigging Bruce, that's right, okay. Got a motion from Gerald. Looking for a second now. Bruce did, all right. Motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay.
I wasn't gonna leave you hanging.
No. Number, uh, eight thirty-one from Ms. Chambers, discuss and approve the addition of hot docs to the list of E-recorders used in the county clerk's office. Hot docs will submit three thousand dollars to put into escrow for their account. Hot docs will submit payments by way of direct deposit the next business day. That's pretty good.
Yes, we have three E-recorders right now. This will be our fourth, uh, that's being used by a lot of counties. Claims to rather big counties like Dallas County. Um, all the clerks I've talked to said it's a, they're very good, very reputable. They haven't had any problems with them. So considering our growth, it doesn't hurt to have a, a fourth in the, the field for us to, uh, to do these E-recordings. So I brought it to you to approve.
Okay, motion from David.
I'll say it.
Second from Gerald. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion does carry. And lead probably in one of the next, uh, Commissioners' Court. Maybe we can have an, an item for discussion on all the new things that the wonderful state of Texas has told you you have to do for elections.
Yes, like right now, effective immediately, you're taking driver's license for everybody that brings us a warranty deed. And, uh, a lot of people are, are, you know, spinning on that one of how to do it and how we're gonna report those, uh, driver's licenses. But that is a bill that passed Senate Bill sixteen in the second session and it was effective immediately. So it's like. I have to have a driver's license now for everyone that brings in a warranty deed. And we have to keep the, a copy of the driver's license on record. It's part of a new property fraud, uh, package that they passed in Bill sixteen. And, um, so, uh, as soon as I get done here, that's what we're gonna be doing is putting up signs and notices and testing the waters to get these, uh, driver's licenses into the system. It's a.
Keep people from following fraudulent deeds.
Yes.
Yeah, like the deal they had in Houston.
Well, we've had a couple and, um, so, but it's just a, the issue of how you're gonna restore and, and keep these. And, um, before I came in, we were, I was on the phone with Mills County and we were talking about it. So I think we figured it out. We just got to, uh, get it implemented in a hurry. So, yeah, they, they're throwing a lot of stuff at us right now. It's, uh, a bit overwhelming.
Well, if you would, maybe in the next court, uh, we can put an item on there for you to bring us up to date. Because some of these have a dollar sound attached to them.
Yeah, and the, the new, uh, voting laws and the, uh, the, you know, what's gonna happen on the election. We probably need to address that at some point, too. But I, I will, I'll make a point of talking about it.
Thank you. All right, item number eight thirty-two from, uh, Nathan Green, our fire marshal. If you would, consider and approve agreements between Liberty County and the following fire departments for fire protection services. There's Devers Volunteer Fire Department, Woodpecker Volunteer Fire Department, North Liberty County Volunteer Fire Department, Tarkington Volunteer Fire Department, Plum Grove Volunteer Fire Department, Moss Bluff Volunteer Fire Department, and the City of Harden. Okay, that's not all of them. I'm sure we have a few more left out there, Andy.
I have seven out that went back out yesterday. We, uh, the big delay this year has been some changes in the contract wording. Some clarifications, some cleanup, uh, between myself and, uh, Ms. McCarty. The dollar amount stayed the same as last year, which was what was budgeted. And the stipulations that were added in there just clarified some issues that were kind of gray in the past.
Right.
Um, and there was an addition for background checks that were either being gonna be done by my office or provided by the department to me to keep in the file so that we had a record of, uh, that it was done.
Right.
Already have two, I think, two volunteer finding removed for felony convictions of moral perpetuity that, uh, didn't figure needed to be going into people's houses or otherwise. So that, that was the reason behind that.
Right, okay.
So, so you're saying, uh, Dayton Volunteer Fire Department and Kena Fick are in that group of six or seven that you just haven't dotted the i's yet?
Correct. Liberty, City of Liberty, City of Cleveland, City of Dayton, uh, they had some internal conversations going on that they needed to clarify between those two entities.
Okay.
They've got that worked out. So now the contract is needed to come yesterday for reunit signature. And then the four ESDs were sent out yesterday also.
Okay.
Now, the contract that's mentioned in there with the city, that is for fire marshal services inside the city limits. That is not for volunteer fire protection service.
All righty.
I'm gonna approve.
Motion from Greg.
I'll say it.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight thirty-three from Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Trident Interstate Pipeline for the use of designated county roads located in Precinct two. Oh, Greg, how'd you luck off into getting your own pipelines over there?
Well, look, I'm on, but we're, I'm, we tabled this right now. We've got some things that need to change.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg to table this until we get some, some changes made. That was a second from Bruce. So that will be on the next, uh, court agenda, uh, first one in October. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight thirty-four from Mr. Poston, consider and approve the abandonment of a twenty-foot wide road easement needed to Liberty County. That's in volume six oh two, page three twenty-six and volume fourteen thirty-six, page one oh seven, official public records. And if you would like to look at that yourself, you can go see Ms. Chambers pursuant to the Texas Transportation Code two five one point zero five seven. Matthew or Catherine?
So Commissioner Arthur actually brought this to my attention. Off some private property, um, that butts up against current County Road twenty ninety in his precinct. It looks like there is, um, a twenty-foot wide easement through private property. And the reason this came about is, um, a private property owner is, is selling, um, a portion of that property, one point five acres. And the survey showed that the county owned this twenty-foot wide easement. Now, this twenty-foot wide easement is pasture land. It's not been used for a county road because County Road twenty ninety runs not that far away. Um, and in fact, if you look in your packets, um, I have the survey note, there's a map in there that shows you where the easement is and how close it is to County Road twenty ninety. So after talking with Commissioner Arthur, as well as the property owners and the intended buyers of this one point five acre tract, um, we think it's in the best interest of Liberty County to abandon this easement. It just makes it cleaner for all parties involved and we can do that under, uh, the Texas Transportation Code, specifically, uh, two five one point oh five seven. Um, because this easement has been, um, without use, it's been fenced in for over a period of twenty years. It needs all of those elements. Um, so it, it's pretty simple. If the court votes to abandon this easement, what would typically happen is, um, ten foot of that easement on each side would go to either property owner, but there's just one property owner as of right now. So it will all go to Mr. Mark Hopson. And then this will make the sale of that one point five acres. Remember, uh, significantly easier and the county is out of it completely.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise nay, that motion does carry. Items eight thirty-five, eight thirty-six and eight thirty-seven will be executive session items. Uh, I would ask at this time that, uh, we have a motion and a second and a vote to move into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. All in favor say aye. Likewise nay, it is now, uh, ten forty-five AM and we are in executive session. Okay, it's now eleven forty-six. We're out of the executive session, back in the regular session. Item number thirty-five, uh, from Mr. Poston. This was held under, uh, executive sessions five five one point zero seven two five. Contracts being negotiated and five five one point zero seven one, consultation with the attorney. This is to consider and approve agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development between Liberty County and Calara Land LLC for a residential development of one hundred and twenty-two point zero four acre tract of land to be located in Precinct four, Liberty County, Texas. What is the court's pleasure in this regard?
Make a motion to approve.
I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, with the county attorney adding verbiage in the contract for road repairs along with the county.
Yeah, I understand that amendment will, um, allow the developer to donate the materials and the county will donate, uh, personnel and machinery, uh, to repair six oh four up, uh, beginning at the county portion through the end of the developer's property.
I didn't get half of that. What are, what are you adding to?
So we are admitting the development agreement to, uh, uh, provide that the developer will, provide materials and the county will provide the machinery and personnel to repair. uh, provide materials and the county will provide the machinery and personnel to repair, uh, county road six oh four, beginning at the county portion at this.
Not that bad.
Sorry.
To, uh, what are we doing to fix?
Uh, to repair county, uh, county road six oh four.
Six oh four.
From the property land.
From, from the city limits through the end of the, uh, developer's land.
Okay, got it.
Phew. Got a motion.
Yeah, Bruce, that's Bruce's motion with the amended.
David tried to make the motion.
So David is seconding?
Yes.
You want Gerald?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay, motion is second, everything's understood now. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Item number thirty-six was, uh, which was item number two, on the executive session that fell under, uh, five five one point zero seven one consultation with attorney, and this is, uh, consider and approve issuing request for qualifications for construction of a Liberty County animal shelter pursuant to chapter two six two of the Texas Local Government Code. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve to go out for RFQs.
Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David, to, uh, start the RFQ process. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Item number thirty-seven, which was with item number three under executive session, and that again was, uh, pursuant to section five thousand one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, this is to discuss, take potential action regarding the failure of ESD number three to timely comply with annual audits as required by chapter seventy-seven five of the Texas Health and Safety Code, including automatic removal of ESD presidents and treasurers. Um, we did have some discussion, Matthew, would you like to clarify?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh, as the court knows, uh, our, uh, new fire marshal has gone through and reviewed, uh, the, uh, audits, uh, to, uh, ensure that, uh, all the ESDs have complied with some of their obligations under chapter seventy-seven five of the Health and Safety Code. Uh, generally, ESDs are required to submit an, uh, annual audit, uh, performed by an independent auditor, uh, on or before June first to Commissioners Court. Uh, June first of this year came and went, and, uh, this court never received, uh, an audit from ESD number three. We did receive them, uh, from others, uh, both a little before the deadline and a little after, uh, but ESD three, uh, did not submit one, uh, by June first. Uh, the statute allows for the ESD to, uh, show cause and request an extension of up to thirty days from Commissioners Court, uh, in order to submit an audit. Uh, no motion for an extension, uh, was ever made to this court, uh, uh, even around June first. In July, the fire marshal reached out, uh, via email to, to let the ESD number three know that we had not received an audit, uh, and that, uh, reminding of, uh, their duty. Uh, after that email, we still did not receive an audit. Under the statute, uh, by operation of law, uh, if an audit is not submitted by an ESD by September first, both the president and the treasurer are automatically removed from office by operation of law, from the board, not just from the office of president, uh, and treasurer, but also from the board itself, which means, uh, that there is a vacancy now. Uh, I would ask the court to acknowledge vacancy, uh, at, at ESD three, uh, at, at the conclusion of this. I, I understand that, uh, if, that the president of the ESD number three, uh, Mr. Danny Lunum is here, uh, perhaps the court would like to hear, uh, from him any, um, uh, reason, uh, for the delay in submission of audits, uh, but nevertheless, uh, it, it is my recommendation lest the court, uh, hears a very, very compelling reason, uh, that the court acknowledge the vacancies and, uh, uh, immediately conduct a search to, to find suitable replacements.
So what I'm hearing from you is that, uh, Commissioners Court has no choice but to suspend the treasurer and the president of the ESD, uh, so there is no basic vote?
That's correct. It, 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 it's not even an act of the court, it's by operation of the statute itself, it's an automatic removal. Uh, it's very, very serious, obviously, matter, the law, uh, takes seriously the obligation to, to audit, uh, taxpayer dollars, uh, and, uh, in, in any event, so the, the, it's not an act of the court to remove them, it's merely an acknowledgement that the, uh, law has an effect on you.
So the, the motion would be take no action?
That you would take no action, yeah.
I mean, would you though, because I mean, the law does it technically, but this would be this body acknowledging and, and approving of the, uh, vacancy as required by law, so.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be an official act as far as the replacement at this point, unless, uh, unless the court has names that they're ready to, uh, to vote on at this point. It wouldn't be an act of filling the vacancy, just acknowledging the vacancy.
How would we go about doing that, besides just take no action?
I would just.
Or just table this?
Just move, move to acknowledge the, the vacancy of presidency, uh, president and treasurer, uh, on the board of ESD three.
There you go.
Okay, so I've got a motion, um, regarding the failure of Emergency Services District ESD number three to timely comply with annual audits as required by chapter seven seven five of the Texas Health and Safety Code, to acknowledge the vacated offices of the ESD president and treasurer as required by law.
That's what I'm saying.
But that is if the court, uh, doesn't also wanna hear from, uh, Mr. Lunum.
Would it change any results at all?
Uh, I, I guess.
You just wanna speak?
Well, yeah, Danny, how many years you been on the board there?
Nine years.
Nine, yeah.
Nine years, oh, fifteen years.
Yeah, yep.
And, uh, what, what happened is my original treasurer, secretary, he was retired due to health reasons. Uh, this was the year, September first, and he had built a gang work, and we always took care of that, with his problems, he didn't acknowledge it, he didn't do it, he didn't know nothing about it.
Yeah.
I understand, this email sent to me, did you buy it? As a fire marshal, I'll never see this email, but, uh, I, I found out, Matthew called, uh, I'll tell you, King Campbell, to tell me what's going on, and, uh, I looked into it, because the CPA, we had not, had not received anything. But we had to give them all, and we said everything in, till this stuff, and they said it was last year and this year's, so both officers are there now, and guarantee that all would be done, obviously, possibly, uh, our department, of course, uh, we're in a lot of stuff, it's, uh, we're moved, ESD can travel over there, for sure.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathy Warner, I'm said treasurer in question, and when it was turned over to me, it was brought in two boxes, dumped in my floor and said, here it is. Assumptions, and we know all about those, that the end of the year being in September, which is the end of our year, those books should have went to Francis Lang, or Swamen Brent, to have the audit done. No one knew they had not been taken, no one was set. Also, last treasurer never took his name, nor did he tell anyone associated that he was no longer with ESD three. Tons of emails went to his email address with ESD, and he never turned over to anybody, never forwarded them.
But isn't it y'all's responsibility as board members to, when somebody's not there, that for so many months, that they be replaced?
She is the.
I am, I am the treasurer now, what I'm saying is.
And who appointed you?
That's true.
Yeah.
Or.
So this was done last January, then?
That's correct.
So January, Commissioners Court appointed you as treasurer, or disappointed you as a member, then the board appointed you as a member, or voted for you as the treasurer.
ESD board votes president.
Correct, yeah, y'all both chose a member, y'all both chose a title, see?
I was previously secretary.
Correct, yeah.
And then Mr. Jones was with.
But that's what I'm saying, is January.
Correct.
Last December is when we made the appointment.
Absolutely.
And appointed you onto the board.
Absolutely correct.
So that vacancy has been filled all this year.
That's correct.
Do you know what last, what the last fiscal year, uh, which year you lasted an audit?
We have an audit every year, we'll, we'll receive our audits, whereas this one year got missed.
Okay.
Whereas we're up to date till now.
Okay.
I mean, it's been a year.
But I thought you said you didn't have one from last year either?
That's what I'm talking about, whereas.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, did that come?
Oh.
This is the one we're talking about.
Right.
This is our audit for this fiscal year, when I'll be due to June the first.
Okay.
Until, before we have that, when we sit in, they're gonna be there from October to June the first, early October, later July. With us out there, that would be done.
No, because we actually can't vote one way or another. I mean, it's, the law is the law, and it's not Commissioners Court to say, well, you messed up, but you can stay in office. It's beyond that. I apologize for that, but.
Well, I understand, whereas, uh, King Campbell, our, our attorney, so, he says, uh, usually it's all, all a little bit, uh, slightly a hand, that's it, so I don't know, I don't know, he's talking to him, but I'm just trying. I mean, we've got, uh, we're just gonna set our tax rate, we're signing contract, part of, everything else, it's the case, we have to do it, whereas we're supposed to, our, our meeting.
You still got three voting members on the board, don't you?
Yes, if, if I'm in town, once I'm in town, huh?
Do you have or could provide names to the court for your replacement?
I have a replacement.
I mean, Danny, I understand you, and, and I've worked with you for years to this, but I mean, what I'm being told legally, there's nothing this court can do except to go by the recommendations of the county attorney and remove the president and the secretary on this violation. Matthew, is this correct?
That's correct, I mean, it's by operation of law, it's not a discretionary act, it's, it's mandatory.
Can, can we get back on the board?
I don't think so. I mean, uh, they wouldn't have made a statute to remove someone from office and then turn around and let them go back on there. But it was to be something that you need to talk to your, to your attorney.
Yeah, if you think you have some legal grounds, you need to have your attorney contact our county attorney and, and, uh, and address it. As it stands right now, we have no choice, but if he's got a case he wants to present to our county attorney, then.
Of course.
Matthew will be glad to hear it.
Sure.
Do you, you guys use Ken Campbell?
Yes, Ken Campbell, yes.
Okay. Because I, I've talked to him a lot about elections and whatnot, I've, I've worked with him quite a bit, and he's usually pretty on top of things. Uh, is there something where once they comply, that, that, that can be put back? Do they have to re-vote to recreate ESD? What's the remedy?
Oh, no, nothing seriously solving the ESD, just, it's just board members, yeah.
We have, we have, we have to appoint two more, and then in the board itself, or if they need, they vote who's the president, who's the president.
Okay.
Amongst themselves.
The idea would be they turn in the audit, and then we re-appoint.
Why has it already been turned in?
Well, I'm not sure.
It's not turned in to the board yet, but then.
You mean it's been turned to the, to the county?
For the confirmation.
Yeah.
So at this point, Commissioners Court is just gonna look around for two more replacements and, uh, bring two committees out.
I'll head on to attorney, contact, can vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, so what's the court's direction here?
Take no action?
Well, we were going to acknowledge the vacated offices, yeah, that was your right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to say.
I'll second it.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Well, I know, you have three. It is double five. We are.